Why don't we go ahead and get started then? Let's call the Johnson City Council Meeting number 20-20 to order. Cindy, roll call please.
Councilmember Coe?
Here.
Evans?
Here.
Martin?
Here.
Ready?
Yes.
Soroka?
Here.
I'll go ahead and read the COVID-19 information statement. Due to the COVID-19 pandemic and in accordance with Governor Reynolds' March 19, 2020 proclamation suspending the regulatory provisions of Iowa Code Section 21.8 or any other statute imposing a requirement to hold a public meeting or hearing, the City of Johnson will conduct meetings electronically with the public allowed to attend per instructions denoted on the meeting's particular agenda. Meeting minutes will continue to be posted per the city's normal course of business. Moving on. We want to welcome everyone that is with us this evening. Cindy, do we have members of the public with us?
We do. They all appear to be related to Clayton's items, however.
Okay, so we know who they are and they're accounted for. We would just encourage them, if they do want to speak, they need to indicate in the chat box to you that they would like to speak and you will make sure that you turn on their audio so that they're able to do that, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Let's move on to the agenda approval. Do we have any changes to the agenda?
There's no changes this evening.
Okay, council, any changes? Hearing none. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Cindy, vote please.
Member Evans?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Soroka?
Yes.
Coe?
Yes.
Motion approved. Moving on to public communications. We have no public communications listed this evening, but again, if there is any member of the public who would like to speak on an item that is not on the agenda, this would be the opportunity to do so. Again, Cindy, do we have anyone indicating that they would like to speak to us under public communications?
No, I do not.
Okay. We will move on to public hearings then. Item 5A, conduct a public hearing and consider approval of Resolution Number 20-251, a resolution approving the 36.713-acre Vogel Land LLC and Craver Annexation with the Establishment of Zoning Districts. And we will open this public hearing at 7:06.
Clayton, under here, are you able to hear me just fine?
You bet.
Awesome. Glad to be here tonight. So we have a voluntary annexation request from Vogel Land LLC. That is the Heartland Stables property, which is at the corner of Northwest 78th Avenue and Northwest 107th Street. Due to the location of their property and the perimeters of City of Grimes and City of Johnston city limits, would create an unincorporated island of the Craver property and a sliver of City of Johnston right-of-way. And state code does not permit unincorporated islands to be created. State code does provide a provision that up to 20% of the land area may be annexed to avoid the creation of unincorporated islands or to create more uniform boundaries of the city, and the annexation would still be considered voluntary. So for this particular annexation, the Vogel Land LLC property is 30.68 acres. That accounts for 91.86% of the annexation territory. Stephen E. Craver and Kathy Craver's property is 2.719 acres, and that's 8.14% of the annexation territory. The City of Johnston right-of-way is 3.314 acres. However, per state code, that counts as neither consenting nor non-consenting since it is a public property. So this annexation would be in compliance with state code. That 20% or less of the area is non-consenting, so it would be able to proceed as a voluntary annexation. We do have this property on our comprehensive plan. The 2030 Plan, which is currently the effective plan, shows as low-density residential. We are very near completion of the 2040 Plan, which is technically still in draft form until finally adopted. But the 2040 Plan would identify this area as suburban residential, which generally we're looking two to four units per acre. And the intention would be that the northern 20 acres approximate of the Heartland Stables property, that would be split off and developed into a single-family neighborhood. I believe it's with about 28 homes. So would be consistent with our comprehensive plan. There's no plans to do any development on the Craver property at this time. Nothing's been indicated to us. I apologize if my dogs snuck in my room here with me. I'll try to keep them quiet. This is within the urbanized area of the City of Grimes. We do not have an annexation agreement with the City of Grimes currently, but this would fall within the City of Johnston boundaries. And we've generally stayed pretty good at maintaining those boundaries, even though they're not legally enforceable anymore. Not really anticipating any impact to any of our departments. You know, it would be absorbed into our City of Johnston Police District, but all other districts are either currently serving it or would have no impact from this annexation. We do have public utilities available to serve the area, and we'd be fine to do that. Not really anticipating a fiscal impact as a result of this. No new staff needs are forecasted and no immediate utility expenditures. As properties develop, we would give you a public infrastructure and then we would roll those into our budget at that time. This annexation does include the establishment of zoning at the time of annexation. What we would be proposing is the approximate northern 20 acres of the Heartland Stables piece would be zoned R-175, single-family residential. The southern approximate 10 acres of the Heartland Stables would be AR, agricultural reserve. The City of Johnston right-of-way and the Craver property would be R-175, single-family residential. Reason for the AR on the Heartland Stables piece is they would like to continue operation as a commercial stable. They're in existing use in the area. Per our current zoning code, they could get a special use permit to operate, provided they are zoned AR ag reserve. The next agenda item under public hearings also does address the minimum lot size for the ag district as well to help make them conforming. But their long-term plan is to become a legal conforming use through a special use permit. And we did provide notice to all adjoining property owners, all required parties as required by state code. We have received one public comment from Zena Rural Water District. They did provide a copy of that for you. The only thing I will note on that matter is the City of Johnston is in pending litigation with Zena Rural Water, and I believe that's pending before the Iowa Supreme Court currently. So with that, answer any questions you may have. Going to further detail, I do believe we have representatives of Vogel Land LLC, the future developer on here. Looking here at the list, I'm not sure if anyone else has jumped on here that would want to chat on this, and if so, they should probably acknowledge in the chat function.
Clayton, do you see the comment in the chat?
Yeah, I just opened up the chat. I see Brian Thompson's comment. Can you mention where the entrance to the Vogel properties will be built?
And Clayton, who is Brian Thompson?
I do not know.
Okay.
I am Brian Thompson, and I live directly across from the horse buns and was just curious as to where those, the entrance would be for, are they going to build a road in front? Or just curious as to what that plan looks like?
No plan has been submitted to date, so I don't know. But with the splitting of the property, what's been indicated, at least verbally to staff, is they would extend the road off of, through Chesterfield Heights, that subdivision just to the east there. And then there's that stub road that goes north of the stable.
Yes, I see what you're saying.
Yeah, that would serve the residential. The stables would remain as-is with no immediate proposals for development or changes to their property. It'd all be that north of the acres.
Thank you.
Now, in the future, it may develop, but I don't know.
Yeah, nope, I understand. Thank you.
Counsel, do you have any questions for Clayton? This is a public meeting or a public hearing on this item. Is there anyone else from the public that would like to speak to this agenda item? If not, then we will close the public hearing at 7:14. Do we have a motion to approve Resolution Number 20-251?
Move approval, Coe.
I take it so.
We have a motion and a second. Cindy, vote please.
Councilmember Martin?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Soroka?
Yes.
Coe?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Motion passed. Item 5B, conduct a public hearing and consider approval of the first reading of ordinance Number 1033 and ordinance amending Chapter 167 of the Johnson zoning ordinance regarding minimum lot size for the AR zoning district, PZK's 20-14. And we will open this public hearing at 7:15.
This is Clayton under again. This really got initiated in conjunction with the previous annexation we just discussed. Currently, our ag reserve district requires a minimum lot size of 30 acres to allow for the development of the Vogel property and the continued operation of the stable. It is proposed to reduce that minimum lot size down to 10 acres. That way, there could be that split. Staff, did take a look at other cities around the Des Moines metro to see kind of where we were sitting in relation to those cities. And we were on the upper side of it, certainly appeared. It went anywhere from no minimum up to 30 acres. So 10 acres seems to be pretty consistent. It's consistent with Grimes, which we're immediately adjoining there. So that's probably a good comparison case. Planning, you know, these main properties that are zoned AR currently is the Johnson School District, Cortiva's lands between 62nd and 70th, and then land that's just out on the fringe of the city that's anticipated for future growth. Those areas will likely be rezoned into the future and developed into some type of urban land use. So I'd expect much of that to disappear at some point. So really minimal impact within our community, staff perceives. Planning and zoning commission did look at this one and has recommended approval. I'd be happy to go into more detail or answer questions at the party.
Does the council have any questions for Clayton on this item? If not, this is a public hearing. Do we have any members of the public that would like to speak? Hearing none. We will close the public hearing at 7:17. Do we have a motion to approve first reading of ordinance Number 1033?
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Cindy, vote please.
Member, ready?
Yes.
Soroka?
Yes.
Coe?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on to item 5C, conduct a public hearing and consider Resolution Number 20-260, approving and authorizing execution of a development agreement binding between the City of Johnston and Donovan Development LLC. And we'll open this public hearing at 7:18.
Good evening. This is a development agreement. It's proposed between the City of Johnston and Donovan Development. It's for five-year, 50% TIF rebates on the project. Pat and Michael Monroe are proposing construction of 11,500-square-foot light industrial and office building along Beaver Drive that would be directly east of the Seek Temple. It's approximately a $1.2 million project. They are also anticipating a second building in the near future, but this development agreement just addresses building number one. The building is a similar size and scope and design of 25% brick facade and metal siding on the remainder, as many of the other projects along Beaver Drive, such as glass or mega garage doors. The one difference between this project and some of the previous TIF projects along Beaver Drive is this is a speculative building, so there's no identified tenants at this point, as opposed to trying to draft a development agreement that would have annual certifications for to-be-determined future tenants, of which there'll be multiple. We've proposed that 25% of the interior space be finished as office space as those interior spaces are finished, which would occur at the time of occupancy occurring for that tenant to help encourage job creation here. So the development agreement's been reviewed by the Economic Development Committee and by staffs recommended for approval. It would be annually appropriated in the East Central TIF District, and the maximum rebate amount under the development agreement would be $85,000. The actual amount of that rebate would be determined by the total assessed value and each year's TIF tax rate. Happy to answer any questions you have. Otherwise attached is also the vicinity map of where the project is proposed, the development agreements, as well as the TIF application submitted by Pat and Michael Monroe.
Counsel, have any questions for Adam? Hearing none. Is there any member of the public that would like to speak to this item? Doesn't appear to be. So we will close the public hearing at 7:20. Do we have a motion to approve Resolution Number 20-260?
Move approval, Coe.
I take it so.
We have a motion and a second. Cindy, vote please.
Councilmember Soroka?
Yes.
Coe?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on to the consent agenda. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Go move, Martin.
Second, Evans.
We have a motion and a second discussion. Cindy, vote please.
Councilmember Coe?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Soroka?
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on to the non-consent agenda. Item 8A, consider second reading of ordinance Number 1031 and ordinance vacating a portion of Northwest Road Drive right-of-way east of Northwest 110th Court.
This Clayton, no additional comments on this one. No public comments have been received. Luke Slick with Iowa National Guard is available if we need to continue discussion for any reason.
Council, any questions?
Clayton, would it be appropriate to maybe consider, if we approved the second reading, to also waive the third reading and amend and adopt and publish?
I certainly believe that would be appropriate. There's been no public comment received on this to date from anyone.
So Councilman Coe, do you want to make the motion for the second reading?
So moved. Move approval of ordinance 1031, second reading.
Do we have a second?
Second, Evans.
We have a motion and a second. Cindy, vote please.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Soroka?
Yeah.
Coe?
Yes.
Councilman Coe, do we have a further motion on this item?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to waive third reading of ordinance 1031 and to adopt and publish.
Second, Evans.
We have a motion and a second. Cindy, vote please.
Councilmember Martin?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Soroka?
Yes.
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Motion passed. Item 8B, consider Resolution Number 20-252, a resolution approving the site plan for Set Point Mechanical at 5519 Northwest 88th Street, PZK's 20-18.
This is Clayton again. Set Point Mechanical, they've submitted a site plan for the development of an 8,861-square-foot office warehouse building at 5519 Northwest 88th Street. The property is currently vacant, shy of a, there is an existing footing on the ground that was constructed in 2007, then that project stalled out, so that would get demolished and maybe start with a fresh site there. The property's zone C2, community retail commercial, and as proposed, the site would be in compliance with our zoning district and as well as our comprehensive plan, which identifies it as a commercial property. There'd just be the single access off to Northwest 88th Street, off that cul-de-sac wall, and there would be completion of the public sidewalk along the cul-de-sac and a private sidewalk connection from the public sidewalk to the front of building, which would be ADA compliant. The site is required to have 34 parking spaces, and they are exceeding that with 40 spaces provided. It would be served by all public utilities, city water, sanitary sewer, storm sewer, and would have adequate fire protection. The site drains generally to the north into an existing stormwater detention basin, where there is no proposed changes to that at this time. As for architecture, in our commercial districts, we require 75% of the wall area excluding the primary materials. That's generally brick, architectural concrete panels, textured concrete black, architectural steel or stone panels. What they're proposing is to use stone and fiber cement to meet the above-listed requirements. Those would fall entirely within our permanent material requirements and meet our code. The site is required to have 25% open space, and they are far exceeding that with 81% of the site being open space. And they're also meeting the open space landscaping requirements with their trees and shrubs. There is a 30-foot buffer requirement on the north property line between this site and the northern single-family residential. There is existing landscaping that's pretty mature and dense in that area. They had some pictures on the site plan. They are requesting that that just be accepted as the buffer landscaping. Those pictures they took, the indicator were taken approximately three weeks ago. So following many of our windstorms, it's still pretty intact out there. No public comments have been received to date, and Planning and Zoning Commission has reviewed this and recommends approval. I'm happy to answer questions, go into further detail if needed. Applicants are available this evening. The Planning and Zoning Commission thought it might be appropriate for them to chat about what their business is, since they'd be new to our community. So with that, I'd open it up.
Well, Clayton, you took the words right out of my mouth. You provided a lot of information here, but what we don't have is what they're proposing the intended use of the building would be. I'd like to hear more about that.
So that'd either be Don or Patrick, is he on?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, good. Yeah, this is Patrick Peterson. Like, so what does Set Point Mechanical do? We do two things. We do, we design and sell HVAC equipment, usually for commercial, the schools, the hospitals, the large office buildings. Generally, the larger, the better, not residential equipment. And then we have another side of the business, which is service, which takes care of the equipment we sell and then other equipment. You know, our market is Iowa, some of Minnesota, some of Nebraska, some of Missouri, some of Illinois, just kind of around the Iowa circle. This is, well, so right now, we're located in two different locations in Urbandale. One for the equipment, one for the service, and this would be bringing us all together under one roof, one building. We would do all of our, you know, design, all of our sales, all of our training for the various equipment lines that we sell would all happen in this one location.
How many voices do you anticipate having?
Right now, I believe we're at 20... I'll say, I don't know, we're 21, 22 right now. I see at some point, we'll probably be just shy of 40, maybe 35 or 40.
Okay.
And this has space for us to grow into, that's for sure.
Okay, thank you. Are there questions, counsel?
I have a question, mayor.
Okay.
What is the intended use for the remainder of the lot?
It has no use. It's all easements. We can't really use it for anything.
So there's no proposed building expansion, additional parking?
No.
Because the reason I'm asking that is you're pretty much occupied a single corner of your lot, and I'm just wondering if you're anticipating future expansions?
Well, we moved off of the setback a little ways in case we need to add to our building a little bit, which in that case would be to the south a little bit. But we've made a point to keep just north of the cul-de-sac open in case there's a future need to put something there. We don't know what that would be. It would be a second building for some other purpose, we don't know. But we wanted to kind of get as far off to one side to leave that open, because once you get north of that easement line, everything to the north is unusable.
Okay. Thank you.
No problem.
And you say it's unusable. Remind me, is this like a drainage way?
To the north is all power lines. It's the big ones.
Power lines.
If the power lines, yeah, drainage.
Okay, okay. Other questions, counsel?
This isn't a question, but just want to welcome them to our community. Excited to have them here in Johnston.
Thanks. We're excited about it. I mean, we've been looking for a while, and this checks all the boxes. It's a nice spot. It's a nice place to be.
That's great. When do you expect to break ground?
If we can get, there's an easement that runs actually right through the middle of that building that we're trying to track down the owner of the land to the east to get that removed, because it's kind of a deal killer. But if we can get that cleared out, we'd be breaking ground by... It would have been a week from today, basically.
Oh, wow.
So we're, we just found that easement, and we're trying to get it cleaned out.
Trying to get it out of the snow?
Yeah, well, yeah, we're a little late. We wish we would have been doing it months ago, you know?
Right. Well, any other questions, counsel? If not, do we have a motion to approve Resolution Number 20-252?
Go move, Martin.
Second, Coe.
We have a motion and a second. Cindy, vote please.
Councilmember Martin?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Soroka?
Yes.
Coe?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Motion passed. We look forward to the ribbon cutting.
Great, us too. Thank you.
Moving on to item 8C, consider Resolution Number 20-254, approving the site plans for a 3,600-square-foot addition to Child Serv Rehabilitation Center at Child Serv Rehabilitation Center at 5406 Merle Hay Road.
All right, Clayton here again. I'm covering this one for Aaron tonight. Has proposed, in addition to their existing connector between the north and south portions of the building, 3,600-square-foot addition. They're going to be removing some of the existing office space and the patient rooms, their beds, and constructing some new office space there in the building. And really, it has very minimal impact on the site. Not talking about any new drive actions, no impacts to put a network through the site. In fact, parking is, parking requirements is actually reduced since the patient rooms have a lesser parking requirement than offices. The one item that really was of note was the... The one item that really was of note was the architecture for the prop, the project. We, you know, as I just discussed, this past project on the primary material requirements, we also have a statement about trim, which includes this material, which is what they're proposing for this property. We state that no more than 25% of any wall area may be EFS, and it only be used as trim. They were proposing about 36% of this addition to be EFS. So staff did have some concerns there on how it met city code. The Child Service Architect did provide some additional information, which really showed if you really take a step back and look at that full side of the building, not just the addition, the EFS only makes up about 8% of the side. So that kind of results, the percentage part of it doesn't necessarily resolve the permanency part of it, which is intended to be a long-lasting material that's not prone to being damaged. Was included as part of the attachment, they had indicated that they needed to use the EFS because of the curvature of the building, and it's try to match the style of the precast on other portions of the building. And they talked about, bit about how they were working about making sure that it was going to withstand well and prevent things such as mold. Staff seems, we're satisfied with what they're proposing now and believe it does satisfy city code requirements and is recommending that the EFS be permitted on the, on this project. With that, I'd be happy to go into further detail, if needed, answering questions. I do believe we have Brad and Sarah, who are representatives of the project, if they have anything they wish to add or give questions to them.
Does Council have any questions? Brad and Sarah, do you have anything to add?
I was Brad Kewell with Bishop Engineering, nothing to add, just happy to answer any questions if there are any.
Okay.
And thank you for your consideration.
Well, it doesn't sound like we have any questions, so.
Mayor, I'm sorry, I was, I'm sorry, this is Councilman Cope, I was just a little bit slow. So Clayton, so I'm just looking at the staff report, where, and it says, so there's recommendation, one, two, and three, and then it struck, then there's a recommendation about the elevations need to be amended to satisfy code requirements, but that's struck. And so, so is that also struck in the the resolution, or do we need to change the language in Resolution 20254 to kind of not, to make sure the EFS issue is consistent with what the developers or the child service planning?
Aaron already went ahead and made the necessary changes in Condition 3 on your resolution, which states that EFS is approved.
Okay, so we're good to go with the way the resolution's drafted?
Yes.
Okay, great, thank you.
Any other questions, Council? Not, do we have a motion to approve Resolution Number 20-254?
Move approval, cope.
Second, Scott.
We have a motion and a second. Cindy, vote please.
Councilmember ready?
Yes.
Soroka?
Yes.
Cope?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on to Item 8D, Consider Resolution Number 20-253, A Resolution Approving the Revised Site Plan for the Johnson Town Center Development. The subject property is located north of Northwest 62nd Avenue, east of Merle Hay Road, and south of Northwest 63rd Place, PZK's 19-25.
This is Clayton again. I believe this is the last item I have for you tonight. Many of the revisions you've seen already, actually, I think all of them, you have come in front of you and changed orders of various fashions to date. Cindy, I did have Brett add in a short MP4 video earlier today that gives us a nice aerial view. This was taken on Thursday, so this is what the site looks like now. So we've acquired those three additional homes on Northwest 63rd Place. They have been demolished, and we're getting the buffer plantings installed. Buffer plantings have begun to be installed along the western boundary as well. City Hall is completed. We are occupying it now from, for offices. I know there's still some work being completed, such as the council chambers. Some of the other changes on the site that have occurred are the synthetic ice rink versus the real ice and the subsequent changes to that mechanical building to make it the concession restroom building there, just south of the ice rink there, and some pedestrian improvements to make them a little more visible and prominent as pedestrian crossings over to that concession stand there. The, another one of the major changes was scaling back the initial installation of parking, specifically in that northeastern portion of the property and the southern portion, what would be the hotel parcel, with the, that could be installed when needed based on the development timelines. We were just concerned about putting so much in and not having the development occur as quickly as we anticipated as a result of COVID-19, kind of causing a slowdown there. So happy to go into questions or go into more detail if needed. We did ask Denise with Confluence to be here as well. That way, if you have questions there, maybe we can go into detail there.
Council, have any questions for Clayton? Not hearing any.
I'm sorry, Mayor, again, I just haven't, sorry for being sort of late. So on the screen right now, we have this map of the various lots that used to be kind of in this, in this part of the community, and there's those three lots to the north. But all three of those lots to the north are now, they've been purchased by the city, correct?
Yeah, and I think that's an oversight on my part. I don't think I, I must not have clicked on them properly to get them into this map.
So the only, the only.
They are within the boundaries of the revised site plan.
Okay, so the only lot that's not within the boundaries is that lot on the south side?
That's correct.
Any other questions, Council? If not, do we have a motion to approve Resolution Number 20-253?
So moved, Evans.
A second, Soreesh.
We have a motion and a second. Cindy, vote please.
Councilmember Soroka?
Yes.
Cope?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on to Item 8E, Consider Second Reading of Ordinance Number 1032, Amending Ordinances Number 531, 598, 778, 885, and 1022, and Providing that General Property Taxes Shall No Longer Be Divided on Certain Property Located Within the Amended Northwest 62nd Avenue Urban Renewal Area in the City of Johnson County, Polk, State of Iowa, Removing Amendment Number 1 Area and Amendment Number 2 Area From Division of Taxes Only.
There are no proposed changes and no public comment on this.
Council, have any questions for Adam? Not, do we have a motion to approve Second Reading of Ordinance Number 1032?
So moved, Scott.
Second, Evans.
We have a motion and a second. Cindy, vote please.
Councilmember Cope?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Soroka?
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on to Item 8F, Consider First Reading of Ordinance Number 1034, Amending Ordinance Number 791, Providing that General Property Taxes Levied and Collected Each Year on All Taxable Property Located Within the Northwest 100th Street Economic Development Area in the City of Johnson County, Polk, State of Iowa, By and For the Benefit of the State of Iowa, City of Johnson County, Polk, Johnson Community School District, and Other Taxing Districts, Be Paid to a Special Fund for the Payment of Principal and Interest on Loans, Monies Advanced to and Debtedness, Including Bonds Issued or to Be Issued Incurd by the City in Connection with Northwest 100th Street Economic Development Area, Amendment Number 1 to the Northwest 100th Street Economic Development Area. I was a mouthful.
I don't write those. In 2019, we amended the urban renewal plan Northwest 100th, primarily to account for some public improvements that were occurring there. At that time, we did add to the area two sections, the first on the northeast corner of Northwest 162nd Avenue, and the second, the previously discussed site along Northwest 88th Street, which is where Set Point is proposing their, their building here. So that included the area into the urban renewal plan, and this will be implementing the TIF ordinance for the beginning of the Division of Taxes. I will see in front of you after completion of this ordinance readings, one through three, development agreement for Set Point. So this kind of sets the stage for city council to consider that development agreement. So it would be a 20-year economic development TIF ordinance, and it would begin collecting any tax increment created on the Set Point property as well as the church property, of which there's none currently at Northwest 62nd Avenue and 100th. Happy to answer any questions.
Council, have any questions for Adam? If not, do we have a motion to approve Ordinance Number 1034?
I move, Soreesh.
Second, cope.
We have a motion and a second. Cindy, vote please.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Roka?
Yes.
Cope?
Yes.
Motion passed. Item 8G, Consider Approval of Claims in the Amount of $2,207,378.88. Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved, Scott.
A second, Soreesh.
We have a motion and a second. Cindy, vote please.
Councilmember Martin?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Roka?
Yes.
Cope?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on to City Administrator Staff Comments. Jim, back to you.
Yes, and I do have one update I wanted to give to the council this evening, and it relates to one of the priorities the council set last year in preparing our budget, and, and one of the positions that we approved was the communication assistant person that would be working with Janet and helping with our communications with the, with the community. So we just recently did open that position up as far as requesting, putting information out so that people that are interested in that position can apply for the position. I just wanted to give the council an update because I know there's a lot of interest in getting our second communication person online. We had about 74 applicants, so it's quite a few applicants that are interested. And so I have no doubt we're going to be able to find somebody that meets with our, our needs and our qualifications. So what staff's doing now is they're going through the applications to take a look at what experience, what education, and that, you know, the people would have, and eventually they'll narrow that down to the list of people that will, that will be interviewed. But I just wanted to give the council an update. I know this is an important position that, you know, we funded for this, this coming up year, and, and now that we've gotten the applications and saw how, how much of interest there is in that position, I just thought I'd just share that with the council. And Janet, or if you're on, do you have anything you want to add to that, or?
I do not, and, you know, kind of just analyzing some of the applicants. It's an extremely qualified pool of people, I believe, so.
Okay, so I have just an update on that position.
Any other staff comments?
This is Janet again, and I just wanted to mention, I know, Council and Mayor, I sent this out to you for Thursday regarding the flag drop box ceremony that we're going to have at four o'clock. The flag drop box is located behind the Public Safety Building. So if you just want to park, if you want, are able to attend, you can just park right behind the fight station, and the ceremony will take place at four o'clock. And I did order perfect weather, so it's supposed to be Thursday, so it'll be good to be outdoors.
Well, I hope so. Did I hear Polk City got like eight or nine inches?
Nine inches, and it was eight. I know, crazy.
It is crazy.
Way too early for the snow.
Hi, this is John. I also want to remind you, next Tuesday is our ribbon cutting for the Pioneer Parkway Trail at 5:30. We'll meet at the amphitheater and, and take the short little walk. I am putting Janet in charge of weather, obviously, since she's so good at it. Would love to see you there. We'll also be looking a little bit at the bricks, since it'll still be light out. The brick project for the 50th anniversary is done. We're still waiting for the plaque that goes along with it, but the bricks are in place. So we'll take a look at that and then do a ribbon cutting for the trail.
Sounds good. Any other staff comments?
Yeah, this is Chief Clark, and because of the snow, we had a burn ban issued for Polk County on Saturday, but as of tonight, it's being rescinded because of the moisture we got. I said I wish we would have had a burn ban back in August, and we could have possibly had some more moisture back then. But anyway, it was short-lived, and hopefully we don't have to reissue it again.
Chief, snow in, in October is early enough. August would have been just completely unacceptable.
I would have taken rain back then.
Okay. Any other staff comments?
This is Dave. I can just give a quick update on the city hall move. So we are all moved into the new building. Hanson is still working on the south side of the building, the council chambers in particular. There, I'm, well, I'll have a meeting later this week to get a better update. My speculation is it's not going to quite be ready, particularly from the technology perspective for the first meeting in November, but I'll know more on, on Wednesday. We've dealt with about 70 different buyers of furniture and fixtures from the old building, so it's pretty much been emptied out. The fire department spent both Saturday and Sunday training in the building and, from the looks of it today, got a lot of training in and, and maybe broke a few windows and some doors and such, but it's scheduled to start coming down beginning next Monday. We're working on one final fiber line that needs to get moved out of the building, and that hopefully will happen yet this week, and we'll start demo on Monday.
Okay, great. Anything else from staff? If not, let's, let's go to the city council members. Councilman Cope?
Nothing, I just want to, John Schmitz, I've noticed, been able, a couple times, I've been down at Lou Clarkson, and I've noticed that the, the extensive development on the second water trail entrance going down to Beaver Creek there, it looks really good. You guys made a lot of progress on it. It's, it's really kind of, because Beaver Creek is so low right now, it's kind of fun to actually go and walk down to where the, where the kayak launch would be because you can, you can really kind of see what Beaver Creek looks like when there's no water in it, because there's not a lot of water in it right now. It might be a little bit.
No water.
What's that?
They're driving back and forth from, because there's, there's access also over on the terrace side. So they're, they're just driving their little vehicles back and forth across the creek. They don't have to go all the way around, so it's saving them time. But both the, the trail components are in. They've got the, the actual launch site down all the way to the creek where it will be, and today they were starting to take out the limestone blocks and putting them into place. So I'll be getting some more pictures probably tomorrow, and they're, they're moving right along. They should be done here about two or three weeks.
Yeah, that's great.
Anything else, Councilman Cope?
That's it.
Okay. Councilman Evans?
I just want to thank Janet and Matt for getting the projects on the website updated more frequent. That's it.
Councilman Soroka?
Just one, it's actually.
Just one, it's actually a question. I think, Mary, you had seen the email too about the Northwest fifty sixth street on street parking. I was just curious what next steps were for that, if there is anything that we're going to respond or. Basically, how we should deal with that.
Jim, do you want to help respond to Councilman Soroka's question?
Yeah, the the question relates to a letter that I believe. Councilmember Soroka and Martin and the mayor received about wanting to restrict parking to one side of the street. On Northwest fifty sixth. Typically, what we do is when we get those requests, we take them and have the. Ad hoc Public Works Committee review those requests, and I think this one they've reviewed before and decided not to take action because. There were several neighbors in the neighborhood that didn't want to have any action taken on it, but. You know, we we got a new request, and so I guess what I would suggest is just send it to the committee. Have them review the request and and they can direct direct how they want to, how they want to deal with this.
Okay, that sounds good, thank you for clarifying. That's it for me, though.
Okay, thank you. Councilwoman Martin?
I don't have anything, thank you.
Okay, Councilman ready?
I don't have anything either, thank you.
Okay.
Well, I don't think I have anything this evening either, I too want to just weigh in and thank. Janet in particular and everyone else who was involved in the ceremony to retire the building, she's she's been a. She's been good to us, but it's time to say goodbye and move into our new digs, so. Anyway, that was a nice event and and you pulled it together fairly quickly, but I think it was it was. It was worthwhile for everyone who attended, so.
With that.
The video is ready, I will be sure to share it out with all of you, Nathan hasn't completed it yet, but. I think it'll be a nice history piece that we can keep, so.
Great, great, just to share with, I think. I I think Councilman Cope may be the only one that wasn't able to attend, maybe Evans, I can't remember who all was there, but. Lieutenant Tompkins wore his. Uniform shirt from back when he was. When the police station, the police department was actually upstairs in the attic. Of the building and the patches that he had on his shirt were the old sailboat. As opposed to the current police. Police Department insignia, but. He proudly wore a shirt that he hadn't worn probably for twenty years, so and. It looked pretty darn good, so anyway, that was fun. Anything else for the good of the order?
If not, we are adjourned.
Right, guys?
Right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.